Good evening, Winthrop, and welcome to the first meeting of three meetings that the council is hosting tonight here in the Harvey Room. The first meeting that we're having is a joint meeting with the Winthrop Housing Authority for the purpose of electing a vacant seat, someone to the vacant seat that is on the Housing Authority, so that that person can get sworn in in the inauguration of the new council president and council on January 5th. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Room, as I said, but it's also on Zoom. And voting people can participate on Zoom in accordance with the governor's orders. Zoom attendance is allowed now up until March. So we will be having some people join us on Zoom that will be voting on tonight's meetings. The number to call to join us on Zoom is 1-646-558-8656. And the ID number, once you get in, is 8653-8976725. Okay? Could we have a roll call of each agency, please?
Winthrop Housing. Peter Cagiano.
Yeah.
Frank Ferrara.
I believe he's on Zoom. Frank, can you hear us? I see. I see Frank.
Frank Ferrara.
Yeah, he's definitely on the.
Do you have to unmute himself?
Here.
Fred Silk. Peter Gill.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have a quorum. The council, please.
Councilor Righero.
Yeah.
Council Plakot.
Here.
Council DeMarco.
Here.
Council LeTieri.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council Quino.
Here.
Vice President Christopher.
Here.
President Boncory.
Here.
Quorum.
All right, having a quorum of both meetings, I will now call the meeting to order. Will you please rise, and I'm going to ask Peter Gill to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
No pressure, Peter.
Can I sit in that seat while I do it? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I should have called on Richard, because I know he absolutely knows it. You were testing me, Phil.
He tested me.
The purpose of our meeting is, under new business, is to appoint a tenant member of the Winthrop Housing Authority to its board. Are there any nominations for the position? Yes, Peter, go.
The two nominees were voted on by the tenants' association, and that's under the new state law that must be a tenant on there. Both are highly qualified, hardworking people, and I would like to nominate both of them, John Morgan and Mary Lou Hyten.
All right, and those nominations are?
Loud.
Are you going to give the names and nominations?
Oh, I did. John Morgan and Mary Lou Hyten.
Okay, so we have nomination for John Morgan of 13 Golden Drive Apartment 6 and for Mary Lou Hyten of Viking Gardens Unit B7. Okay, so both are qualified, both are highly qualified. We will now take a vote, and would you please answer with a roll call vote when she announces your name?
Mr. President, there's no motion for either party. Should there be a motion made for a party?
No, what it takes is just a nomination, and the nomination is coming from the tenants' association, so it's more than one person, so it doesn't need a second. But you know what? Maybe before we vote, we should hear from John or Mary Lou if they'd like to say a few words and give you like three minutes each to say why you'd like this position.
Hi, everyone. My name is John Morgan. I live at 13 Golden Drive. I moved to housing in May of 2016. Shortly after I moved there, I heard that there was a tenant board that dealt with the issues in housing, both financially and how the organization is run. I attended most of those meetings over the past almost five years. And I've come to appreciate how hard Peggy Lyons works and how the Housing Board gets the job done to make all the tenants in housing safe. And that's it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Thank you for being a constant visitor here as well. Mary Lou.
I'm Mary Lou Hyten. I've been living in housing for nine years, been president of the tenants' association for the past seven years, and I've worked along with Peggy with budgets, projects, parties, making sure different people, tenants, are taken care of. And I just feel I'm qualified for it, and I like working along with her.
Thank you very much, Mary Lou. Both of you sound very qualified. Can we now move to a vote, and it will be a voice vote individually?
Peter Cagiano.
Mary Lou.
Frank Ferrara.
Frank, is there something he can push to get?
Ask to unmute.
Is he unmuted? Can you see that?
He's unmuted.
Frank, you have to unmute yourself. Put your microphone on.
I don't think Frank's tech savvy.
It's probably down in the lower left.
Yeah, I think the lower left corner, there'll see a microphone. If you click on that, your microphone will become unmuted.
He's locked his mic.
Okay. Is it still muted?
He's locked his mic.
Okay. All right, move on.
Richard Honan.
Mary Lou.
Fred Silk. Peter Gill.
John Morgan.
Here, we have a total of two to one for Mary Lou Hyten.
So far, two to one. Yeah. Call everybody.
All right, yep. Councilor Righero.
Mr. Morgan.
Council Plakot.
Mr. Morgan.
Council DeMarco.
Um, based on the advice of the committee, I'm going to go with Mary Lou.
Council LeTieri.
I will also go with the committee and Mary Lou.
Council Honan.
Mary Lou Hyten.
Council Farino.
Mr. Morgan.
Vice President Christopher.
Mr. Morgan.
President Boncory.
John Morgan.
One, two, three. It's a tie.
Do you want to try to get Frank?
Denise, you want to try to get Frank?
Yeah.
Get him ready.
Maybe just call him.
Give him a cell phone.
Yeah.
Explain to him how to come. Either one of them, Mr. Silk?
No, excuse me.
There can't be, but you still need a vote. There's only 11 people that voted. You can't have a tie.
Right, it's only 11 people that voted, right?
But you still need one more vote.
Right, it's six to five right now. We have to have seven.
Okay, so we're going to call.
Now, we have eight to six, six, seven, one, five. Eight, four, six, six, one, seven, eight, four, six, seven, one, five.
Because there's 12 people, so you need someone else to get seven votes.
Six, seven, one, five.
It's not just, you know, if it's six, five, and one, you still need seven.
John and Mary Lou, if I can just say so, you know, I think it's pretty obvious that you have a ton of respect coming from both sides.
Both sides, huh?
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's no easy answer for this.
I wish we could put both of you on.
Yeah, I think we both feel the same, yeah.
Right? This is Peter Gill. We can't catch you on the sound, so what I'm going to do is we just took a vote with Mary Lou and John, and do you want to give us what your vote is?
You have to put it on speaker.
Hold on, I got to run things.
They know you.
Who is it, Peter, that you have on the phone?
Somebody would have to.
Frank Ferrara.
It's got to be Frank.
Can you explain to him how to get on the Zoom?
Ask a question, only he would don't.
All right, Frank, you there?
Do you have to confirm that it's him?
Probably.
All right, you're here, Frank. Okay. Okay, who's your vote for?
I'm voting for Mary Lou Hyten.
Okay, thank you.
Six, six. Well, if you can stay on.
Keep them on.
Frank, Frank, stay on. Can you pick by the mute button? It's a little speaker with a line through it.
On the TV, on the computer.
Peter, send it.
Just come over here on the phone.
Is there a way to get a hold of Mr. Silk?
He's going to do something, can't stay on.
I'll stay on the phone.
Oh, he'll stay on, okay.
Okay. Could someone else get Mr. Silk on the phone, so we get the vote?
Do you have Freddie's phone number? I put it out in the car.
I can't do it. Hang on here, because I lose.
Hold it, I'll save it anytime.
Let me choose my vote to be Christopher.
Does he really have no way to break the tie?
We don't.
We don't. Unless we get an other vote.
Hey, this is a question for the town council, maybe?
Yeah, I got that.
And we're having a vote for Mary Lou Hyten or for John Morgan. Okay, that's the housing.
We've got him on the phone.
No, you're going to go onto the Zoom? Okay, hold on one sec. Thank you. All right, bye-bye. Thank you. He's going onto the Zoom right now, Ricky.
Well, this is a barn burner.
Wouldn't expect this one.
No, no.
He got confused with his 6:45 housing. He got confused if he thought it was a quarter or seven nineteen. I know, I think he's going to go onto the housing. Send him the link on his cell phone, so hopefully he can assist.
Well, look at it. He's probably going to go onto the link for the Housing Authority meeting later on, not the separate link that Peggy put out for this. We've got 15 minutes.
If he's still on the phone, I emailed him the latest.
Yeah, we have plenty of time.
Good thing we scheduled.
So are they contacting Fred?
Yeah.
It's what?
Do you?
It's Ricky.
I'll call Ricky, too.
Oh, Fred?
It's Fred, Ricky.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Denise, you had him on the phone, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm going to call him back. Oh, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
Yep.
Fred, are you on now?
Oh, goodness.
Yes, I am.
All right. It comes down to you to be the tiebreaker. As a member of the Housing Authority, each of the two candidates has received six votes so far, and you are the tiebreaker. So are you with Mary Lou or are you with John?
Thanks for the pressure. My vote is for Mary Lou Hyten.
Okay, congratulations. All right, so we now have broken the tie. We have a. Mary Lou, congratulations and welcome to the board. I hope you're going to be able to make it on the 5th to the inauguration, so you get sworn in with the rest of the group.
I'd like to say thank you for your vote, but the real winners are the residents of Winthrop.
For both of you. For both of you. Thank you for always being active and staying active, John, coming to every single meeting and for being on the diversity committee. I appreciate the work you do.
Well, thank you, but there's never anything good on Tuesday on television.
Thank you, John. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
Motion's been made by Council LeTieri, seconded by Council DeMarco. All those in favor of adjournings, signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. We will be having another meeting, a phone call meeting with the school committee at 6:30. Good evening, Winthrop, and welcome to the second meeting of the evening. This meeting is a joint meeting between the Town Council and the Winthrop School Committee to fill a vacancy on the school committee, so that that person can be sworn in on January 5th with the rest of the newly elected people. To my information, we had two people that were requesting it, but of course, anybody can be nominated to that position. To join us, because this is a Zoom meeting, which is being televised also on WCAT, to be shown live and during the week, to join us, please use this telephone number, 1-646-558-8656. And then put in an ID number of 865-389-76725. Okay? Please join us on Zoom, because we are still under the governor's mandate. Voting can be done by Zoom as well as in person. Would you please call the roll call of both the school committee and the town council?
Brian Perrin.
He told me that he wouldn't be able to be here.
Jennifer Powers.
Powell.
Powell. Gass Martucci. Suzanne Swope. President. Bill Boncory is.
Yeah, president, yes.
You do not have a quorum?
If we only have two members of the school committee, then we do not have a quorum, even though we have a full quorum of attendance of the council. You need a quorum of both committees to conduct a joint meeting. So I will adjourn this meeting, and we will post a new meeting for a joint meeting of both the council and the school committee for January 4th, Tuesday night, at 6:00 PM. Okay? There is no meeting to be opened, so there is no reason to adjourn. We will be in recess until 7:00 PM for the regular council meeting. Thank you. Winthrop Town Council meeting of December 21st, 2021. The meeting is being held in the Harvey Room. The meeting is also being shown on WCAT Live and will be shown by tape during the next coming weeks. We are also here via Zoom. If you would like to join us via Zoom, please call 1-646-558-8656 and put in an ID number You'll be able to join us for public comment or any public hearings. Would we please take a roll call?
Council Righero.
Yeah.
Council Plakot.
Here.
Council DeMarco.
I'm here.
Council LeTieri.
Here.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council Farino.
Here.
Vice President Christopher.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
Here. There being a quorum, I now call this meeting to order, and I would ask Councilor Farino, for the last time, to please leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Last time as councillor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please stand, please remain standing for a moment of silence. We lost a valued member of the community in the past week, and that is Davis Proctor. I don't know how many of you know Davis, but he was a longtime active member of both the Harbor Master Committee and the Planning Board. He served many years in this community, and he just recently passed. So moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 7th, 2021 meeting as amended.
I'll second her motion.
Council Plakot makes a motion. Council DeMarco seconds it. Are there any discussion? Are there any additions, deletions, amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Council Righero.
Yes.
Council Plakot.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council LeTieri.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Quino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Minutes are approved. Under general information and recommendation, I just want to say that we are in dire straits with the pandemic. Over the past 14 days, we've had a real surge here in town. In the past 14 days, we went from 81 active cases at a time to 158 cases in the past two weeks. Not only that, the worst part of it is a positive percentage rate rose from 3.78 to 5.2. 5.2 is a very serious amount of percentage. I mean, when we were 5.2 before, we had mask mandates. We closed the town down, and I don't anticipate doing that again. But the Board of Health put out an advisory, and the Board of Health put out an advisory asking people to wear masks, not making it mandatory, but asking people to wear masks when they're indoors. So please, because I adopt that advisory that the Board of Health put out as council president, please, when you're indoors, wear a mask. And I should have mine on, but if I put it on, you wouldn't hear me at all. So please, wear your mask when you're indoor. During this Christmas holiday and New Year's holiday season, please be careful. I mean, if you're going to parties, you can avoid some of the kissing and hugging, and, you know, enjoy yourself, but please be aware that COVID is on the rise, and you need to protect yourself and the people around you, your families, and even the strangers that you meet. So please be smart. Okay? Moving on. Meredith, do you want to add anything?
No. No, I think you covered it really well.
Okay. All right, let's move on then. I have some citations to give out, and I'm very happy to do that. And the first citation I have is a Town of Winthrop Town Council citation. Be hereby known to all that the Town of Winthrop and the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its appreciation to Richard Farino, Town Councillor, and Member of the Historical Commission. On behalf of the residents of the Town of Winthrop and especially your constituents in Precinct 1, we offer our most sincere gratitude for your past devotion and your commitment to the Winthrop Town Council, the Historical Commission, the Finance Commission, the Public Works Committee, the Capital Assets Committee, and wish you all the best in all your future endeavors. And finally, we have a citation that is signed by each and every member of the council. So Rich, if you come up, I'd love to give you someone.
You can.
Just take my mask off.
Thank you. Well, the years of friendship.
Thank you. And if I could just say one word.
You want to do it?
I just want to thank the constituents. You want me to do it later?
Pete wanted to give his at the end.
Okay.
I can wait till then.
Well, Pete's got like three chapters of Gone with the Wind.
I have one. Yeah.
Three minutes.
Three-minute time allotted.
The second citation I have reads Town of Winthrop Town Council citation. Be known to all that the Town of Winthrop and the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its appreciation to Peter Christopher Esquire, Vice President of the Winthrop Town Council. On behalf of the residents of the Town of Winthrop and especially your constituents in Precinct 5, we extend our most sincere gratitude for your past devotion and commitment to the Town Council, the Economic Development Committee, the Public Health and Safety Committee, the Rules and Ordinance, and the Senate Business District Committee. We wish you well and all the best in your future endeavors, given this 21 days of December 2021 at Winthrop, and it's signed again by every single council, which is really rare.
Have the three of us in here.
John, are you going to back me up on this?
I'll back you up.
There you go. Go ahead, Terry.
We got a professional. We got, we got, we can.
All right.
My dear Frank, congratulations.
I never thought anybody would take over the Winthrop Council after 15 years, but you did a great job.
Thank you.
It was well worth it, wasn't it?
Okay, moving on. We have no public hearings tonight, and we're now open to public comment. Anybody in the audience wants to speak on public comment? Bill, maybe you can give us more information on the mandate, but the advisory that the Board of Health put out.
Well, I actually wanted to speak on two things.
Okay.
But first, since you brought it up, yeah, the board, we had a meeting last Thursday. The board, particularly the new members felt strongly that we should issue an advisory asking people to wear masks, particularly in the holiday season. As you said, it's on the town website, it'll be in the Winthrop Weekly, hopefully it'll be in the transcript. So we're just asking people, wear masks if you can, try to be careful and do the right thing. But what I really wanted also to say, having been in public service for a lot of my career, I'd like to really express my appreciation to Council Farino, Council Christopher, President Boncory, for your service to the town, because I know what it's like. You get a lot of calls, people are always at you whatever you're doing, and they don't always agree with what you're doing, but it's a real terrific service you've done for the community, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience on public comment? Karen?
I just have a couple of questions for the town manager, and if not, to give me the answers tonight, certainly.
But he's going to give a town manager report. He will.
Okay. I just want to know how the fees for the trashes come in, and how does that enterprise fund scale? You're probably not going to be able to give me those numbers. And also the ferry. Did we ever get the DEP money? Did we ever get the money from Quincy? And are we in the red? And do you think we're going to be able to restart in April? Or are we going to have to shut down? Again.
Do what I do, town manager.
No, you know, please, don't feel we have to answer me tonight, but.
No, I think he is addressing at least a part of that.
Thank you.
All pressing issues, we keep track of on a daily basis.
True.
Are there any other people who wish to speak on the public comment? Is there a hand up on Zoom? Nope. See, I see a hand up. Is that a hand?
That's a mute.
That's a mute.
All right. Nobody else?
No.
See, nobody else who will close public comment at this time? Is there any correspondence?
We've got plenty of correspondence on school committee members, from several different people in the town. Plenty of them. Too many didn't he?
Okay.
Very concerning.
Okay, and that's it?
That was it, yep.
No other issues that we got, or respond to? Okay, committee reports, did any committees meet? Here we go, now we'll move right on to town managers with brief report. Brief report.
So, Mr. President, like everyone else, I'd like to thank you and Council Farino and Council Christopher for your years of service. You're the longest-serving one of them in, you know, well, over 16 years at this point. So we certainly thank you and your family, because it's just you, it's your family sacrifices, everyone here on this committee knows, and as well as the employee knows. Without our families in the backing, without our families, we can't do what we like to do and want to do. So certainly, I thank them as well. I will yield some of my time, Meredith, where we shot them all the time. If you could just outline how we've been handling the testing kits. We've had a lot of requests about testing kits, and how do they get testing kits? So Meredith had put an advisory out earlier, and I'll just ask her to address that.
Sure.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you, chief.
Would you come near a microphone so people can hear?
I'll yield my seat.
I know, I know. So, as a lot of people have seen in the press, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has given out about 22.1 million test kits, and Winthrop was one of the 100 communities that received free in-home test kits from the Commonwealth. So we were given these test kits to distribute to those experiencing financial hardships that make the purchase of tests difficult. So with that, on the state website, it shows that we received 5,040 test kits. They come in a two. They come in a two, in a two-test kit, so we've received two thousand five hundred and twenty kits. It's not reasonable to say that we're going to break those kits apart, because the instructions are on the outside of the box, and the QR code to report it is on the outside of the box. So how do you decide which person gets the instructions and which person doesn't? So I'm looking at it that we have twenty-five hun, two thousand five hundred and twenty units to give out in the community. So what we have done is, so we received, we received the tests last Wednesday. I got a call from MEMA at eight-thirty in the morning. They showed up at nine-fifteen and dropped off the tests. Did not give us a lot of heads up that they were coming, which is fine, and we're grateful that we have them. So what we have done is we've prioritized, we've prioritized certain sectors within the community. So we have, we've already sent out about eighteen hundred to two thousand test kits in the last two days, going to public housing, food pantries. You know, our food pantry in Niemore and some nonprofits are doing food and present drops this week for Christmas. So we've worked with them to put test kits in their delivery drops, working with houses of worship, working with families with DCF, working with daycares. Daycares are a big, a big cluster that, you know, they're usually a population that's unvaccinated. They're usually a population that tend to be in each other's faces, you know, developmentally. So we've worked with daycares to drop them, to put in the backpacks for kids. So that's what we're, what we've really been intently focused on in the last forty-eight hours. We do have some left, and now we're trying to, you know, figure out what the next steps are. So we'll kind of put that out to the community, hopefully. I know it's hard, because there's such a massive demand right now for testing, and we know that, you know, the, the shelves are kind of bare for the test kits, and people are struggling. I was trying to look around today for some, some other sites other than Project Beacon and things like that. So, you know, some communities have done the first-come, first-serve model. You know, I know Quincy was doing it. I see in Lynn that they're putting out a hundred thousand tests. So communities like Lynn and Boston, they received almost an equal proportion to their population. We clearly did not, because we are not, we weren't as, as burdened by COVID nineteen. And so, you know, we're, it's making that, that decision process, you know? We want to make sure we're doing it right, and so that's where we stand with it. Some more to come. Happy to answer any questions if you guys have them.
Where do you recommend we get tested?
So I was looking today, and a lot of the Project Beacon sites have very limited availability. You know, I don't think that there's been great information kind of showing that, like a lot of things, you know, that are state-supported, they got ramped down when the cases started to, to decrease. Like, the Contact Tracing Collaborative is no longer in existence. We're in a massive surge. We're doing all of that outreach, like, trying to manage it now locally. We're doing some regional efforts with it. But it's the same with, like, some of the Project Beacon sites. They just don't have enough appointments available that we had a year ago, quite frankly. Transformative Healthcare is testing in Revere and also in Chelsea. I looked on their website today, I registered, and it's through the state site. I put it up, I think I put it, I put it up on the, the Facebook page for the, for the Health Department this evening, and they had appointments in the next few days. But a lot of these sites are closing down the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth, and also the following day. So that was one that, that was looking promising to me, for a PCR at least.
I will say Chelsea and MGH, I know someone today that went there. They were there probably a good hour and a half, did get a test. You have a lot of college kids that will be going back to school, that the schools are requiring a, a negative test to go back. So you have a lot of kids that are trying to get appointments, and it's, and it is extremely difficult. But in, in, at MGH and Chelsea, it's, you know, kind of first-come, first-serve in a lot of ways. They'll take you. I know I heard the line today was extremely long. But again, an hour and a half is, if you have to do that, if you have the ability. Yeah.
Yeah.
Beth Israel in Chelsea, right?
Oh, okay.
Beth Israel in Chelsea is the one that was open, because Goldie and I went there the other day in the snow. We had to wait about an hour inside in the snow to get tested. They thought everything was negative.
But they're extremely nice there. They're very cooperative.
Very cooperative. They'll test anybody.
Stay in your car and drive through.
But they do close for an hour.
At lunch, one-thirty to two-thirty.
Two-thirty. So be aware of that. And as far as the kits, the kits are really hard to get, even trying to buy them. CVS and everybody are out of those kits. If you are fortunate enough to get a kit either through the food bank or through the senior center, don't waste it. Don't use it if you, you don't have a symptom. If you have a symptom, test yourself. But if you don't have symptoms, you know, don't waste the kit.
Yeah.
All right? Seriously, because we only got twenty-five hundred, and twenty, two thousand are out already to needy people and, and seniors and, you know, other nonprofit organizations like Niemore and the food banks.
And we have done, you know, we're also encouraging people, another tool that, you know, we really keep on harping on is just the vaccination. So we're not doing any, any clinics this week. We, we will be hosting them after the new year. So much of our efforts with vaccination are driven by our, our volunteers, and these people have been showing up and showing up and showing up. And, you know, I just think that they kind of needed a break too. But I know the Commonwealth Clinical Services is hosting a clinic down the Point next week with Moderna. So, and the Chelsea, the Chelsea Senior Center has had, people have had good luck getting, getting vaccines over there, and they have Pfizer, Moderna, and J&amp;J over there. So we hope to, you know, we'll keep on sharing information as it comes out.
Another place where you probably can get kits is at the Boston Public Library in East Boston on Bremen Street. They have so many of them that they were giving them out, you know, like six to a family or so.
Yeah.
So they're, they're available there, and they don't question you, how many people in your family, and they'll give you a test.
One more. Is there an option for someone to get a PCR test sent to their home? Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes. So the state has, on their website, there's an ability to request a PCR test, and if you put in your insurance and say that your health, Health Department has requested that you get it, then they will send it to you for free. You can also buy them, which I didn't realize that you could do that, for people that are more interested in, like, just proactively, like, screening themselves. But, you know, there is the option that they will send you, the state will send you a PCR test. You swab yourself, you send it back, they pay for the shipping, all of it, and it's usually uploaded within twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. And thank you for everything you do.
So I just jump into the trash regulation that I circulated. The Board of Health signed trash policy from the Board of Health. Certainly, there is, everything's in, within their jurisdiction. Fees fall into the council. We voted a fee of one sixty last May. That fee's still in existence. There's some language in the, in their policy that I think the council needs to concentrate on and evaluate and see what the next steps for the town will be. On holidays, it says overflow will be free, which would indicate that, you know, with the six holidays, your overflow trash would be no charge, which would indicate that any other time there would be a charge, even though it doesn't explicitly say that, is that the intent of this council to charge for overflow bags are not. I know the question's going to be coming. Myself and Director Cala have been tracking the tonnages on a weekly basis. They, we get the reports on a monthly basis, but it breaks it down by week for us, and we evaluate that. We're running about fifty tons less than we were last year for each of the months so far this year. Could go up, could go down. You know, again, I think we see the recycling a little bit up from last year, but the price is down on the tonnage. So, so we kind of break even there from last year. So it's something that we watch on a daily basis. You know, we've collected over six hundred and ninety thousand, Steve, at this point, on a hundred and sixty-dollar fee. But I also want to remind the council, we did have a administrative error that we were correcting, so some people's fees are going to be late. There'll be no charge for their late fees because the error's on our end, and we've been working hard to correct that. I think, Steve, with them, almost all have been corrected at this point.
They've all been identified, and we're working to correct.
So, so, you know, I, we're delighted to see that we collected almost seven hundred, a hundred thousand out of the nine hundred and fifty thousand that we projected that that fee would be brought in, and we think we'll meet, meet our benchmarks and goals on that account by the end of this fiscal year. So I hope, let's move on to the ferry. I just had discussions today with Bay State Cruises on the ferry. They have talked to me before in two thousand and eighteen, when I was the interim manager then. We're glad to reconnect, and the next steps for Bay State myself is to have conversations with the Convention Center to see if they're interested in doing something on a regional basis. Right now, that account, as of yesterday, was two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars negative in that account. We have sent Quincy a bill that would bring in a hundred and sixty-two thousand of that two sixty-six, and then, of course, the state was waiting for my report and a three-year plan for the two hundred thousand dollars that they have put aside for us. We ran it this year for two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. My conversation with Bay State, they basically said, no one else can do that. You bring Bay State in to run our ferry for just Winthrop and Quincy, it's four hundred and sixty-six thousand. If you do a regional, they can drop the price down, because the Convention Center's already paying them, I think, one point eight million to run their ferry service. So, you know, regional's the way to go with this. We'll keep talking and seeing who's, you know, who's entertained. But DEP had not funded us this year, and we sent, did send letters to DEP. So, you know, again, we need to work on this. We need to work on it January, February, so we know what we're doing in April, you know, whether we're going to run a ferry or not. That needs to be determined, and where the money comes from needs to be determined. So we're working on it. We're giving it due diligence and trying to keep everyone up to speed and in pace. Again, that's one of the many projects we're, we're working on. We're also doing media budget reviews. We've started with the larger departments, Police and Fire. DBW will meet with me next week. Robbie's involved with the auditors, already going through and providing them all the documents they need. So that's very time-consuming for his, him and his office. So in order to take some of the pressure off, I've been doing some of the budget reviews. And so far, the Police and Fire Department look very good to close out the year in the green and not in the red, so we're very positive about that in the black. That's moving forward. Please visit the town calendar for holiday hours. Our holiday hours over the next two weeks will be modified, of course, to contract calls for Christmas that falls on a Saturday, that they celebrate that Christmas holiday on a, on a Monday. So we'll, you know, for example, we close that Monday. Thursday before, they get a half a day, so that town will be closed Thursday on a half a day schedule there. But all the hours are posted. I just wanted to give some examples. Scam alerts, please, just reminding everyone, there's a retirement scam alert out there about the Winthrop Retirement Board has reported to us. There's package thefts going on out there, and, you know, there's a, delivery drivers, I won't name any companies, that certainly try to help themselves as well. So recently, we've had an arrest made of a delivery driver dropping packages off that was inside the house. So he's been criminally charged. So just be aware, be alert, look out for your neighbors, certainly get vaccinated, get those booster shots, drive down these numbers, and as Phil said, which is very hard for him, no kissing and hugging during the holiday season. And again, just want to thank the Winthrop Fire Department for Santa Claus. It'll be a courtesy of the Winthrop Fire Department again this year for, I don't know how many years, but ever since I've been a child, I've remembered Santa coming. So again, the Town Managers Blog, Facebook, and the town website has his schedule. Look at the schedule to see when he's coming through your neighborhood. I certainly hope everyone enjoyed their Hanukkah season, and I hope everyone celebrating Christmas will enjoy their Christmas holiday as well. And since we will not be convening before the new year, everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? For Terry? Hearing none. Thank you, Terry, for your report. The school committee report's very, very brief. We met last night in the school committee at six o'clock at night. The meeting lasted about a half hour. There was a report on COVID and rising numbers in, in school, and talking about getting vaccination reports in. So we asked every parent that had their child vaccinated to please get that report in if they weren't vaccinated by the town, by private industry. So please do that. The other general report was on committee reports. Suzanne Swob gave a committee report around the Shore Collaborative, and they're working on new mission statements. The meeting was a very quick meeting. There will be another joint school committee meeting and council meeting on January fourth at six PM. And that is the end of the school committee report. If anybody has any questions, let me know. Moving on to old business. Under old business, there is a resolution that was put forward by Councilor Christopher. That resolution went to the Memorials Committee after our last meeting, and it's come back from the Memorials Committee with a motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to read that motion, Councilor Christopher?
Well, the motion is that the Memorials Committee approves the Town Council Resolution of the New Dog Park, currently under construction, to be named in honor of Michael McDuffie, or take any other action relative thereto.
There is a motion on the floor. It came out of the Memorials Committee, which is more than one person, and Council Christopher also had made the motion to send it there. So it does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? You want to discuss it as the maker of the motion?
Um, sure. So I felt that it was important that we put this, we recognized Michael in this way to sort of recognize one of our own on the council. Michael was instrumental in reviving the dog park issue at a point when it was kind of at a sandstill, and it was an issue that very few members of the do, of the council really wanted to take on, because everyone in the community wanted a dog park, but no one wanted to say where the dog park would go. And in my experience at town hall, a lot of times when you hit a roadblock like this, these issues kind of die for a little while. But it was something that Michael really wanted to take head on, and it was something he took with pride and really worked hard on. And he made doing this really look easy, because there was something about his demeanor when he spoke that just sort of made it so. He could look at you, and you knew that he was taking into account your feelings, your concerns, and that he was balancing them against whoever was speaking against him on the other side of whatever the issue might have been. And because of this, his voice and his opinion meant a lot to me, and I observed that it meant a lot to other people and members of the council, despite him serving for such a short amount of time. There was never any skepticism about his decisions, because you knew you weren't just, you knew that he wasn't just taking into account point of view of his friends or his point of view. You could tell that he wasn't thinking about the next election, or what a certain group of people may have thought about his decision. He always did what was best for his community, and that's not always the easiest thing to do. He was on the council for a very short period of time, and, and his time on the council should in no way be the only defining thing that he was. He was a hard worker, a loving brother, dad, husband, and a man of faith. And to me, he was an amazing friend and a hockey buddy. I will miss him, and if one day I ever happen to own a dog, I will think of him every time I go there. I encourage the council to support this resolution.
Is there anyone else who should be heard on the council?
Here we want to echo Councilor Christopher's remarks. He, he was such a man of character, and although it was such a short time in the council, he did leave an indelible mark, and he was a man of integrity. And, and all my years in the council, there's not a motion I could think of that's more deserving, so I highly support it.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we will take a roll call vote. Are those in favor of naming the new dog park in honor of Michael McDuffie? And which, when will that be open?
I would say, well, it's being used now.
I see it being used, but is it officially?
We did get the watering, the watering equipment, so we don't have the water on now because of the season, but it's being used. Anytime you want to do an official groundbreaking, I'd say it's at your, at your desire.
All right. So there, there can be a dedication of a new sign for Michael McDuffie at some time? Probably.
Yeah, I would recommend that. We don't have it in January.
Won't be able to get it in the ground.
All those in favor of the motion be signified by saying aye.
Council Regero.
Yes.
Council Placot.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Lettieri.
Yes.
Council Honin.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business. All right, moving on to new business. We have a motion for the polling locations for the special state election on the eleventh of January and on the district-wide election for the Northeast Vocational Schools on the twenty-fifth of January. Unfortunately, we have to have these separate elections, but we do have to have two separate elections. And it's been yeoman's work to do all these special elections and extra elections out of the clerk's office. But we, we got to do it again. I think there's a motion coming from Councilor Leteri.
There is, I thank you. I will read the motion first and explain it a little bit. That I motioned that the town council vote to authorize the following change of election polling locations for the special state election on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two and district-wide election for the Northeast Vocational School on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas there is a special state election on one eleven twenty-two and district-wide election on one twenty-five twenty-two. Whereas there exists an exempt, an expected vacancy in the office of State Center for the Town of Winthrop. Whereas there exists an unexpected ballot question for the purpose of paying cost of designing, constructing, originally equipping and furnishing a new Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School and related athletic facilities located at one hundred Hemlock Road, Wakefield, Mass. Whereas the state has issued an election calendar for a special election to fill that vacancy. Whereas the regional district school committee has issued an election calendar for the district-wide election. Whereas the state election will be held on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two and the district-wide for the vocational school on January twenty-fifth, twenty-two. Whereas the council understands that the following location is appropriate for such based on, upon its close location to existing poll places, handicap accessibility and in particular, physical characteristics. Now, therefore, the Winthrop Town Council votes as follows. I hereby declare and designate that voters from precinct one, two and five will vote at the Winthrop Gymnasium, one fifty-one Pauline Street. Precinct three and six will vote at the Robert De Leo Senior Center, thirty-five Harvard Street. And precinct four will vote at Golden Drive for the special election date to fill this, the office of Senator to be held on January eleventh. And respectively, for the district-wide election for the Northeast Regional Vocational School on one twenty-five twenty-two or as stated by Secretary of State Elections Office, one or two designated areas may be used for centralizing polling locations for precinct one, two, three, four, five, six, if so decided. And further, that the town council directs the town provide notice by posting on the town's website, generally town clerk's election page, along with an advertisement in the Winthrop transcript and on all bulletin boards, electronic, all in social media. So, basically, what we are asking for is there are two elections being held in January, two special elections. We are asking for discretion to allow the town clerk to either continue the polling places as was just done in the November election and the special election in December or to consolidate to one polling place. The, the expected turnout for, for these elections are expected to be very small and limited. And just for purpose of general information, the cost of the Senate election is, is the town, at the town's expense. The cost of the special election for the vocational school is picked up by the vocational school. So, this is, you know, given the, the authority and discretion for the town clerk to decide what is best for her, her staffing. It has been very difficult, difficult and she has done yeoman's work to, and, and the poll workers have been incredibly good and supportive. But it's still hard to find an appropriate amount to fill all three locations. So, this gives the town clerk a little discretion as to what she does, gives her the option to go either way.
All right, is there any?
And this is under new business, but we would like it voted on this evening because.
Because the elections are coming up very fast. So, any discussion, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Placat.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Leteri.
Yes.
Council Honin.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Aye.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. There was a motion, I believe this is also coming from Council Leteri to suspend the rules.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we suspend council rules for the January, for, for the first meeting in January from the first Tuesday in January, which would be January fourth to the first Wednesday in January, which would be January fifth. The, there will be a swearing-in ceremony on the fifth followed by a brief council meeting. But we do need to suspend council rules in order to do that. Sorry, I'm asking for that vote this evening.
All right, motion's been made by Councilor Leteri to suspend the council meeting on the fourth, I heard you have it on the fifth. This will not affect the joint school committee council meeting, which will still be on the fourth at six o'clock. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Leteri, seconded by Councilor Farino to have the regular council meeting on January fifth, right after the inauguration. Is there any other discussion on it?
Just a question.
Yes.
So, the new councils will be sworn in and immediately they'll be, they'll have the first meeting. At the senior center.
Correct, yes, and the location of the meeting would be at the senior, Robert De Leo Senior Center.
Okay, any other questions on that? Again, this does not affect the joint school committee and, and council meeting, which is still on for the fourth at six. Okay, all those in favor?
Just ask a question from the, the director has a question.
I just got a quick question regarding timing. So, last, last meeting, we referred a water main, request for water main retained earnings to be transferred for emergency repair on Revia Street. We have a situation where we have a, a water main break that's isolated, but it's, it's creating chlorine residual.
Can we take this vote first as far as the meeting and then we'll, we'll discuss it?
I don't know if it has, has anything to do with the, with the meeting or what, like, yes.
Because we don't have any motion here in front of us far. And I don't think anything has come back from any committee to make a vote on it. So, I don't think we can vote on it tonight, no matter what.
Right.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of Councilor Leteri's motion to have the regular council meeting on January fifth, signify by saying yes when your name is called.
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Placat.
Yes.
Council De Marco.
Yes.
Council Leteri.
Yes.
Council Honin.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes. You're voting yes to suspend the rules?
For you because it's your inauguration. I don't want to mess up your inauguration. Moving on, public comment, we are back in, under public comment. Steve, did you want to say something about some motion?
Well, I, I guess my question was if the council would entertain it not going to, to the finance committee. Just to try to move money from retained earnings to make a repair. We're pushing this thing out now. By the time it gets back, you're probably three weeks away. And, I mean, I, I will probably have to start the work and we'll have to do a transfer afterwards. But I don't think I can wait until it goes through that process. It, it should have came in front of the council tonight for a vote, that's all I was trying to say.
Or can the existing, put it another way, can the existing finance committee meet and make the recommendation or send the recommendation to the council clerk before the fifth and then the board takes effect?
We could, and then vote on it then, you mean? We could do that. The, the only potential conflict with that is you have to wait for the minutes to be approved technically, right? So.
Yeah, but I, I think the important thing is to try to get this on by the next meeting.
Is that what you're, to get it voted on by January fifth? I mean, that's not a problem if that's the.
Yeah, we're just trying to get the work started and I was hoping to get it started.
Without an appropriation.
Yeah.
I mean, you have an appropriation, you just don't have it in this, right, you just don't have it in the same account. So, I don't think there's a problem with starting the job.
Is there a motion?
But can we, can we?
You can make an emergency motion. I'd make that motion.
I would second it.
Well, we need to know the amount of the money and. The amount of money, yeah, that's the problem.
And really, emergency motions are for public safety. This could be public safety, but I don't think it, it really is.
The motion you heard last, last meeting.
But over a certain amount has to be sent to finance?
Well, it has to be advertised too, right?
That was the problem.
Yeah. That they forgot to advertise it. We'll, we'll take it.
I'll figure it out with a lot of great budget and have to make a transfer.
You can call the finance committee.
Yeah, we just need, it's just more of an advertisement thing than anything else. Yep.
Okay. All right, moving on, any other new business, anyone else have any new business? Hearing none, we'll go back to public comment. Is there any other public comment in the audience? John Morgan?
Yes, hi, John Morgan, precinct four. Now, I'm going to say a four-letter word, which, which will happen eventually, and that's snow. As you know, the DPW has a responsibility to the town for the drivers to treat, plow and then treat again. The business owners in the town have, they also have an obligation to their customers to have their areas cleaned and, and salted for their safety. Not every resident in the town will shovel their walk. As a pedestrian, it's, over the years, it's been, it's been a little more than difficult trying to navigate snow mounds without snowshoes or a, or having to carry a shovel around with me. I asked that the town and the residents, when they can, when it's safe for them, to please shovel their walkways. If you have a fire hydrant, to clear the fire hydrant down. And if you live in the corner, to shovel out the corner so you can cross the street or, or a curb cut. I'm asking this as a pedestrian, but not as a totally blind person. Thank you.
Thank you, John. It's well spoken because it, streets should be cleared for people that can get down, especially handicap ramps going down, even though you don't own that ramp and the town might, you know, clear those areas. All right, anyone else on public comment? Karen?
Karen Travis, precinct two. Mr. President, after sixteen years, I do appreciate everything you have done, as I am sure everybody else does.
Thank you.
And over the sixteen years, I'm sure you and I have had our disagreements about things. But I think what we've disagreed on has always been the best for the town. What an agreement has been made, I do wish, wish my best wishes. And I hope that you will enjoy your time off and both Councilor Christopher and Farino too, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, thank you, Karen. Anyone else on public comment? Is there anyone on the Zoom that wishes to be heard? I can't tell if that's a microphone or a hand.
It's a microphone.
Are there any hands at all?
No, no hands, no.
Seeing none? I will close public comment. I'm surprised we haven't heard from Mr. Dow.
He's sending you a Christmas present.
Okay, moving on to public relations and upcoming events. Just to announce, there is a swearing-in ceremony for all newly elected officials on January fifth, twenty twenty-two at six P M. at the senior center. And that will be followed by council meeting of the new council and election of a vice president and so on. So, I want to wish all the new councilors the best of luck and, and please enjoy that inauguration. I'm sure Jim and Denise have something extraordinary planned for this inauguration. I mean, it, it may not be as big as Biden's or Trump's, but it will be a big inauguration. Moving on, the special election for the senator's race is January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. There is no early voting in the election, okay? So, it's just that one day, so get out to vote that day. The district-wide election for the Northeast Vocational School will be held January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. All right, is that right? Is there any other public relations, comments that anybody would like to make? Councilor De Marco.
Thank you, President Boncory. And don't worry, I'll make sure that we're getting out of here within an hour in your last meeting. I just first wanted to start by thanking Rich Farino, who has the greatest garage that I've ever invited myself over to. You know, and he always answered the call whenever I had a question. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, whenever I called you, you always answered the phone. And, you know, I leaned on you and I really appreciate every bit of support that you gave to me. Pete, you got a beautiful family, another one on the way. And you were probably about seventy-eight percent of the time when I called you. You know, maybe ninety-eight percent of the time.
Pete likes caller ID.
Days after eleven, go to voicemail.
But you were always there for me too and, you know, our town, I mean, you know, you started as, as a young man who, who didn't have a family and now you have a family of your own and your, your career has taken off. And I wish you nothing but the best and, and thank you for everything. And finally, President Boncory, I was trying to think about when I probably met you and it was probably in the early eighties in Lynn when you were tying your son, Robert, skates. You know, you know, you're somebody I've looked up to, you know, as a kid. And, you know, with your sixteen years, as Karen mentioned, obviously, thank you for everything you've done for this community and this town. And I'm going to miss working with all of you, so, thank you.
It feels more like sixty years. It's been enjoyable. Anyone else? Richard, you wanted to say anything? You said you would like to say.
I just wanted to thank the citizens of precinct one for affording me the opportunity to represent them for the last three years. I think we've accomplished quite a bit, even though we did have COVID. A lot of projects were done in our precinct. We had one forty-five done, we had Main Street done down the back end. We had the shed, the dog park, which is all precinct one, tennis courts. And so, we got a lot accomplished. And I, I think we're going to move forward in our precinct with our new councilman, Mr. Fusillo. He comes with some great backing and some great enthusiasm. And I wish him the best of luck. And lastly, I want to thank the council, it's been a pleasure being with all of you. And what we've gone through was incredible in the last few years. And, you know, I'm going to miss being with you all, but hope to see you on a different level and a different basis. But, and thank you to everybody and the department heads. I know Steve had to listen a lot to me and Terry and, but, and Meredith also. You all did a great job. And finally, thank you Denise. She was always there, she always had answers and was very helpful to me. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Council Christopher. I know you're up.
Okay, so I am up. I do want to congratulate Phil on a long career. It kind of, I remember when I first applied to be on the council, we needed to have a vote like the first two that we had. And I remember calling Phil last, thinking that if he knew I was going to go for it, he might run someone against me. So, we've come a long way. And a long road. But I, your dedication to the town is really something to behold. And Rich, I, I really appreciate just being a good friend and working with you over the past couple of years. You know, every time I look at the clock tower on E.B. Newton from now on, I'm, I'm always going to think of you, that is a signature issue like no other. And you're, just your general advocacy for, for maintenance of history in our community is, is really great. But I want to thank everybody for being, for supporting us. Terry, I think I've worked with like five town managers in five years. It really is a pleasure.
Me twice.
It has been great. And I, I just want to say, you know, at the end of the day, each and every person that I've worked with for the town has absolutely positively had the town's best interest in, in hand. And there isn't an nefarious thing that I've ever experienced, somebody do or a, a self-centered thing. And every debate that I've had with somebody, I've always felt has come from such a genuine place in everybody's, in everybody's point of view. And that was not my observation when I was watching this from, from afar. And that was not my observation when I was watching this, um, from, from afar. And, you know, it's, it's just been, it's something that I think that everybody should keep in mind. No matter what way you come down on an issue, um, everybody is, uh, going at it for the general benefit of the community. I, uh, also just want to thank, uh, some, some of my friends who helped me with my campaign when I first ran, Bobby Driscoll, um, who was my best friend since preschool. My sister, who's still my treasurer. Some of my friends, Bill Schmidt, uh, is a, is a great advocate and, uh, someone I always go to for help and with issues. John Ead, um, who was, you know, before COVID was at all these meetings. He was someone that I always talked to so much. And, uh, it's just been such a great way to get to meet people and to understand different people's perspectives and, you know, try to hear from as many people at once. Uh, my wife Laura, my, uh, son Gerald, um, they, they were here earlier, we took pictures. And he's got to go to bed at seven, so he couldn't make it. And also my mom, uh, she really ignited sort of, uh, my love of community. And, uh, I know she's watching because that's what we did every Tuesday growing up. So I wanted to thank her, um, and everybody on the council for supporting me whenever I had a question. There's been a lot of turnover the past couple of years. But, you know, the, the people who I served with before and present, uh, it's just been such a great ride. And thank you to everybody here.
Good question. Any.
Yeah, I have some. So, I know you're not a big citation man, but, uh. But for the better part of two decades, we've been together, charter commission and the council. So we do have a citation from the council, be it known that the town of Winthrop and the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its appreciation to Philip Boncory Esquire, Town Council President. On behalf of the residents of town of Winthrop, we extend our most sincere gratitude for your past devotion and commitment in beginning, uh, to beginning our town on its journey of its new government. A council for over 16 years, co-author of the Winthrop Charter, our council's counselor-at-large and numerous committees and subcommittees, you have had a hand in guiding us for over 200, uh, Denise might have made a mistake. I don't know if that's a Freudian slip or what, but, oh, for guiding us over 200 years, which should probably be 20. There is not enough thanks for all that you have contributed to our town. We wish you well in, uh, best in the future endeavors, and it is also signed by all the councilors. And I know you're not big on citations, so we do have a little gift for you, for you to take with your red, white, and green little paper. We know you will enjoy that more than you might enjoy the citations.
Am I supposed to open it?
No, you don't have to.
I should, I should. Bill Schmidt, turn around.
So you think of a cross street, have one with me in the backyard.
You guys want to join in?
Yes.
I know you're doing it. My white tongue, I don't want to take a picture, so.
Do I just a backup? Sorry, Terry.
Please.
Just as a backup, nice job, guys, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much for my presence, from the councilors. And, uh, you're right, Jim, we've been together for 19 years at least, since, uh, the beginning of the charter. And it's been a pleasure working with you and I wish you all the best of luck in, in the, in the future. With your new council that's coming in. And I only have, uh, the best of wishes for you and your council. And I, uh, hope you'll call on me if you need my advice or my help with anything over the coming years. Because I'm not leaving town, that's for sure. But, um, since I was in law school, I think, 1970 probably, I first got involved in the community by getting appointed to the Winthrop Scholarship Committee. It's my very first appointment. And, uh, of course, with that, I was on the, uh, town meeting for all the years since. And this is probably the first time, uh, in all that time since then, that I haven't been the president of some, it's not a January 5th. No, seriously, between, you know, the locally, uh, the J.C.'s and the Sons of Italy and nationally and statewide, I've always had some kind of presidency, it seems, for the past 60 years or 55 years. And, uh, this is going to be, uh, tough to, to not be in charge of something. But I'm going to enjoy my retirement significantly. And, uh, I already got some good plans of traveling and, and doing things, but I have so many people to thank. And I want to thank every single person that have served on this council since the inception of the council. I've worked with every one of them, obviously, as have Jim. Uh, we worked through so many, uh, council presidents, we worked through so many different town managers. And every one of them has been dedicated to the town, at least all of the ones that we, we closely worked with. I think we've had a, a couple of town managers that I would, uh, rather not have had. But I think that, uh, we have a real good one right now. And I want to appreciate what Terry does for this community, not just as a town manager, but as a chief of police and as a Winthrop person. Uh, beside thanking the councilors, I want to thank every town manager. I want to thank everyone that works as a department head, including our town clerk, our new town clerk. Because those department heads and those people that work for them, it's what makes Winthrop keep going forward. It's not the council, the council sets the policy, we may set a budget. And hopefully it's a budget enough for them to get their jobs done. But the people that are doing the jobs are our employees. Our town employees, our town department heads, our firemen, our policemen, our DPW workers, even the people that clean the bathrooms here in town hall. They make the town what it is and they make it better. So, you know, when, when I look at the accomplishments of, of this past administration, I don't look at them as accomplishments that we did. I look at them as accomplishments that you guys did, your employees and the people that care about the town. And there are a lot of people that care about the town, some of them care about it and get involved and help. Some of them say they care about it, they get involved, but they never help. And be one of the ones that helps, always be one of the ones that comes up with an idea, a positive idea. There's too much negative baloney going out, and I call it baloney on social media. And, you know, I don't even belong to Facebook, but I hear it and I see it, uh, once in a while. And it, some of the things that are done out there are just so far off the wall because people listen to rumors instead of asking the truth. And anytime, any member of this council will tell you, there's nothing to hide. There's no, you know, collusion, there's no, there's no, uh, backdoor talking. It is out there, everything that is done by this council, and it has been done, as long as I've been on the council, there's always been above board, there've been disagreements, but there's never been disagreeable people. And we've always tried to lay out what the facts are. But for some reason, they always get twisted in social media. So don't, if you're out there, don't rely on rumors. When you want to answer to a question, ask that person the question. Ask them nicely and they'll give you the correct answer. And let's not go forward on rumors, but let's go forward on facts and make this town an even better place. Because everybody is on the same page and there's not animosity and there's not uncivility and there is not gossip and rumors that are running the town. Because people listen to that and then don't want to get involved. Let's get everybody involved in doing the right thing and making Winthrop even better than it is. So thank you to all of you, thank you to the town of Winthrop. And a special thank you to my family and to my wife, Cole Eve, for giving me the opportunity to be with you instead of with them. And there's been a lot of times that I've been with you instead of being with them, when I shouldn't have been with them. But, you know, when you get, you take a job, you do that job. When you swear that you're going to be a, a, a member of the town council or the school committee or the planning board, you attend the meetings. You make sure that you get to those meetings because that's your job. If you're not going to do that, don't run for them. Get involved another way and help. But if you can't attend the meetings, don't take a job, okay? Thank you all so much for listening to me. I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. My son would say, that's not politically correct, but Merry Christmas to you all. A happy and healthy New Year and, uh, I hope it's prosperous. And I wish Jimmy the best of luck in the next two years. Appreciate it. Since you're ready to run and you're all standing, I have to say a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
My last capital.